He did it. I said, the crew we had at the fairgrounds, I said, I'll work with that crew at this time. I said, they were so efficient and good and.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, he wasn't really sure what he was supposed to do. I said, they'll tell you.
They'll tell you.
Yep.
Jamie is not gonna be here tonight, is he?
Correct. Yep, he even heard that as a reminder, but he gave the some of the stuff we needed from him for later, so. Just making sure it started. All I had to do was look to make sure the button's good.
I was saying a little prayer for the weather god in the dress over here. Cause it's like black down at Melvin and the wind started picking up two miles west of Serbani. And it's like, just let me get to the front door.
Yeah.
The winds are really blowing now.
Yeah.
Picked up pretty quickly too, right? Yeah.
I think it's still supposed to stay south, but just barely. And then there's some more building out past Rock Rapids. Alright, I have got five thirty, so we will call the first public hearing to order. Public hearing on the sale of buses. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. I would entertain a motion to do so.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose. Motion carried. Alright, um, is there anyone here that wishes to bid on the buses?
We do. George Little Rock does.
Okay. I guess, uh.
So there's, just so you guys know, there's two buses. Um, not the numbers mean anything to you. We call one twenty seventeen or two seventeen, just so you know, it's the mid-size bus that can we use for activities, but like Amos said, it's the point that it's very limited in its use. Um, it still has value and works, but once the teams or activities get too big, we don't use it as often as it could, so that that's the reason we're selling that and hopefully then use this money to get something different used down the line. And then the other one, number nine, was a route bus. And for lack of a better description, it was Olivia's bus, the one we used with the wheelchair, wheelchair. And so it would be to our best interest to have a full bus, cause we don't need that particular model at this time. And if that happens down the road, then we'll address that then, but he'd prefer if we get this gone to switch to have a full-size, full-size bus on that route.
Okay.
So those are the two we're talking on.
So we've got one. Are you here to bid them? Oh, together. Okay. So we just have them present the bids?
Yeah, should we go? Do you know which one's which?
The one with the two thousand fifteen is Olivia's bus?
Yes.
And it has ninety-five thousand miles on it?
I believe, yeah, we call that number nine, Olivia's bus. Yep, yep.
And the other one is a two thousand seventeen or sixteen?
That I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's the shorter one.
They're both forty-eight passenger.
Is it on here? Yes. And the one is longer, but it's forty-eight capacity because of the space dedicated to the wheelchair.
And what year is that one, sir?
Two, they're both, I stand corrected, they're both two thousand seventeen.
Both seventeen.
I thought they were different year models.
What did I?
My apologies. It says two thousand seventeen on here for both of them.
Okay, is that right?
Yeah, I think so. We'll come to the next, next page.
Are there any others submitted bids?
There are not. Yep, on here it has in both is two thousand seventeen as well.
And the, the regular forty-eight passenger has fifty-eight thousand miles on it, is that correct?
I will answer that here.
I don't, I don't know the miles, whatever Amos would have told.
I think that's what it was.
That sounds right. That's, I'm sorry, Tom, that's not on here, but that does sound right.
No, I just wanna make sure the years. I know, I thought one was a sixteen or a fifteen, but they're both seventeens.
They're both seventeens. That's what's on here. I thought they were a year apart too, but they are both seventeens.
Well, the reason we're here tonight, we, uh, we are in need of buses. We don't need the big buses like you, I mean, bigger buses like you guys need, but, uh, forty-eight passengers is, is, will look at size for our school district and we like the opportunity. We're not gonna change, put them into campers and things like that. We wanna use them every day in schools and people buy them, do things, but it'd be a really, a nice thing for us to keep the buses in this area and we appreciate the partnership and again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight.
Absolutely.
So we just, so are you guys ready to submit bids? What's that?
You can just say what their bids are.
Yeah.
Do you have a starting point set or anything like that on your?
So we do have a floor. They, we were told we can start at whatever and take the bids from there and then, um, when we have the bids or the final bids, I'll let them know if we met the floor or not, or what our recommendation is. And then we can go from there. Okay? How about bus number nine? That's the one with the lift on it.
That's what did, did ninety-five thousand miles. We'd like to start out at ten-five if we could.
Okay. And we'd ask for other bids, but there are no other bids.
That's the one we were gonna, probably sell the job, didn't, or we were parted out or whatever, but yeah.
Okay.
We think that's fair.
So ten-five they have on that one. And then the other one I call, it's, yeah, two seventeen, cause that's the numbers on it, two dash seventeen, but that's the, it's still forty-eight passenger, I believe, but it's a shorter bus. Do you have a bid on that that you want?
We'd like to go twenty-four.
Okay.
And you.
So that's what Amos gave me on both.
Okay. So how do we, how do we move from here?
I think you can just say what the floors are. There's no other bids.
Okay, so, yeah, we're talking with our, um, transportation director. What he was looking at is a four, a floor for tonight. The first bus, what I'm gonna call the lift bus, number nine, he had it at twenty-three and a half. And then the number two seventeen, he had it twenty-seven thousand, twenty-three and a half thousand for the first one, twenty-seven for the second one.
So then does that come to us as a board? We either accept or reject the bids?
That is my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we make another proposal then?
I was gonna say they.
I would, yep.
Yeah, I'd love to do that then.
Okay.
Again, I know what buses are worth and that they're, they're tough to buy, but, uh, I would go from ten-five to fourteen-five, another, uh, four thousand dollars. And the other one I would go up to twenty-four thousand, twenty-four-five.
From twenty-four to twenty-four-five?
No, another twenty, another four thousand. There's a twenty-eight-five for the other one.
Twenty-eight-five.
And fourteen for the other. So I think it's forty-three total, is that correct? If I'm not right, probably not.
Yes, yes.
And you're at a total of what, fifty?
Yeah, correct.
So forty-three, I think it's a fair, fair bid for us to, to give you tonight.
What was Amos's plan?
Use the money to get another, for lack of a better word, activity or, um.
My question is, when he came up with those numbers, um, especially on the ten-five on the bus number nine, what was his plan if we reject the only bid that we got? What was he going to do?
For right now, we'd use them till we figure out what we'd need to do moving forward.
Okay.
That was what his plan was. Yeah, I can ask him.
Relatively close with the two of them.
Mm-hmm.
Not, I mean, uh.
Are we okay to do that if I go on?
Absolutely.
Sure. He just talked to me a little while ago.
He's our expert. What are you guys' thoughts?
I don't know the bus.
Let's get his opinion and see.
Yeah.
I'm not knowledgeable at all on what buses go for, but.
Hey, how are you? Alright, hey, we're at the board meeting and we have just the one party, George Little Rock, interested in the buses. Okay, and for the two, where at? Could you say the number again, Kyle?
For bus two seventeen, they're at twenty-eight-five, and for bus number nine, the route bus, they're at fourteen-five.
Total of forty-three.
So for a total of forty-three for the two. Okay? They're kinda at the, the, that floor that we had discussed on the one and just below it on the other and on the total. What are your thoughts there, Amos? Mm-hmm. The number nine. What about the two seventeen?
Twenty-eight, they're over.
Over what you had, what we had discussed. Okay. That's what we gotta, we'll ask them that. And they're both, I'm, I'm just confirming here, cause they asked that, they're both forty-eight passenger, right? Yep, yep, and that's what it said, but I'm just making sure so that we had that correct. Okay.
And you guys are interested in both of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, do you guys have anything else you wanna ask Amos?
I don't think so.
Alright. Thank you, Amos. Bye. He, he said he's okay with the one. He would rather not, based on what he's looking, sell the other at that price.
So he's okay with the two seventeen, but not the number nine?
Correct.
Okay. Thoughts, comments?
I mean, Amos knows buses better than any of us sitting at this table.
Yep, I agree.
So.
And are, is that you guys' final bid then, on both buses?
So he's at fifty total?
Yes.
Yes.
So what did he have the, the wheelchair one at? He wanted fifteen for that?
Twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah, that's, okay. And the other one, he's fine with our bid on that, cause we went over the asking price for that.
Yes.
If you do a little bit around the handicap one, we, we'd be interested. Can we go another, another two thousand dollars, make it, make it forty-five, forty-five thousand total?
So sixteen-five?
Yep. Yeah.
I'm assuming Amos didn't wanna let that go for less than the twenty-three?
That's what he just said. I didn't ask, I didn't ask about the five thousand, I mean, a five thousand dollar difference, but he just said, I don't wanna let it go for that earlier bid.
He didn't give you a minimum?
Not different than what he had said initially.
I guess we have the authority to either accept or reject the bids. And is that you guys' final offer then on the?
I think forty-five's a pretty, pretty good bid for us.
Okay.
Maybe one at fifty and
Okay.
Forty-five I think is, is good for us. Consider that, we appreciate it.
Do we have to ask him?
I can, yeah.
Ask him, they came.
Yeah.
They came up another two.
Hey, it's me again. So we are back here and we have them up to forty-five for the two. I got you on the phone here with the, the board again. We had set the floor at the minimum, you know, at fifty. We're in the middle of the hearing here, just so you know, here. So they, they came up to forty-five as their final. No, what if they're meeting it on one, just so that I know here, we don't have to keep going back and forth. They meet it on one and not the other. Okay, just so that I know that. Okay? Okay, that's what I'm asking, so. Okay, thank you. Yeah, he said for our purposes, he wants that as his minimum on both. He said, and if they're good with one and the other versus both, he's okay with that too.
Okay.
But for what he's looked into, that's what he needs, he said. Okay?
So would that be your final?
So the, the first bus that we went over four thousand, that, that'd make a difference?
Uh, you went over fifteen hundred from twenty, what was it, twenty-seven to twenty-eight-five?
Okay.
So you're over fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Then the other one was twenty-three and you're at sixteen-five.
Will you split it with us?
It sounded like Amos wanted the twenty-three. Would you guys want one and not the other?
We'd like to, we need two buses. I mean, that's why we're here, so.
But I mean, if we, if we would reject one, would you take the other one?
Like to buy both of them, but if we get one, it's better than we have, but.
Okay.
And I know what's his plan to do with the other one. I mean, he's gonna offer for sale or?
That or if we don't have enough to get another, I mean, ideally he was gonna flip this into the used market to get another one for our route bus, so if not, in the meantime, we can use this till then. It won't have obviously the big capacity that he needs, but like, that's what he just said. It's yellow and it still gets us down the road, so I still have a use for it. Ideally, he'd like something different and bigger, right?
I just think sixteen-five is fair with, with almost a hundred thousand miles on it. Man, I've done my homework. I mean, that's probably a buck or five hundred dollars off.
With the twenty-three?
That I don't, other than looking and researching, that's where he came up with.
The other one in comparison's fifty-eight thousand miles. It's quite a big difference there.
I'm sure he had, isn't that one with the lift? I'm sure he's figuring a little bit extra for the lift. I don't know how much those are worth.
I mean, in my mind, it's a, it's a market. If you need it, you need it. If you don't, it's a waste.
Right. Right. Any comments? You guys know where we're at? Amos's recommendation is to sell the one that met and reject the other one. Do you guys have any thoughts? And were you going to stick with the sixteen-five or were you going to meet halfway from the forty-five to the fifty and go another twenty-five hundred?
I would go, I'd go forty-seven and a half and that's it. I mean, that's something we can do. I think I'm twenty-five hundred off of what you guys want. We just need buses, guys. And we don't need sixty-five passenger or something, but we need forty-eight passenger buses, or as most.
Thoughts? I think we're within twenty-five hundred.
I think that's close enough.
I agree. I also think we need to think about being in good relationships with our
I.
neighboring communities, and I think we've always had a good
We have a, we have a program sharing with you.
Yes.
Yep.
So.
With George Little Rock, so I think for twenty, for twenty-five hundred dollars difference, I think we need to.
Okay.
So who's making the motion?
What we've got is, uh, we need to make a motion and should read something to the effect of, I hereby resolve the sale of the buses or reject the bid as not adequate. So would there be a motion? And probably state the sale price when you make the motion.
I'll make a motion to resolve the sale of the school buses for a combined price of forty-seven thousand five hundred to GLR School District.
Sounds good. Is there?
That's sound accurate.
Thank you.
Is that second? Is there a second? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to resolve the sale of the buses to George Little Rock for a total of forty-seven thousand five hundred. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the stewardship and we can break up you guys. We may have to work here right in with you two, so.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Captain Five be in touch with you or we'll send things.
Yep, sounds good.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Alright, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the first public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Alright.
Aye, all oppose. Same. Motion carried. Alright, now we move on to the public hearing for the instructional support levy.
I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Motion carried. Alright, I'm trying to bring that up here and it's not working real well. Moving down to, is there any public opinion on the instructional support levy? I am seeing no one here to voice their opinion, so seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose. Motion carried. Alright, I will now call to order our regular board of directors meeting. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
To approve the agenda. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose. Motion carried. Moving on to five school board basics. Number one, put students first. Number two, follow the law and your own policy. Number three, respect the chain of command. Number four, base decisions on shared objective information. And number five, operate in the public eye. Moving on to item three, the consent agenda. Um, Kendra has handed out a couple pages to take a look at.
Since our board meeting was early this month, we are, we're, we're still getting invoices in the mail today. Some of the bigger ones, Daktronics is the, um, next, it's sixty percent of the full amount of the board that they are required to ship the, the board. That part is in part of the agreement with the boosters to, to pay us back for that over the next several years. FNIC is our insurance that you guys approved last month. Let's see, what else? Mercedes-Benz, um, is, our bus leases are up this year. It's a little bit weird this year. Um, this is the final payment for the bus, buses that we have been leasing. Normally we'd turn them all in and get money back for them and then get five new buses. There's only two buses available for us, so we'll turn two of them in and, um, we'll be paid for those two and then we'll do the other three in October, November when they're available, so, um, it's a, it's a big chunk, but we'll, we'll get, get that back. Normally we'd get it back right away, but we'll get some later in November.
And there's the, I'll add, there is the potential, in talking all these bus situations through with Amos, that one of these lease buses, instead of turning it back over and, and selling it right away, that we'll, we'll keep it for additional activity route, because right now the used bus market is really tight and some of those might fit us better than actually getting a different used bus. So it'll just depend on our needs. It's hard to know that if it's gonna happen with these two or the three later. Amos will help talk to us and figure that out, just so you know.
Essentially after this payment, we own the buses. It's the final payment and, yeah.
Yes.
It's.
So I said buy them, we already bought them, but we wouldn't turn around and sell it right away. We'd keep it for our use then is what would happen.
Alright.
I have a question.
Sure.
How much did we, of this hundred and sixty-four thousand for the video board?
How?
I'm, I'm trying to go by memory here.
The, of who's paying for what?
Yeah.
The total project was two hundred seventy-five thousand, I believe, for the, the board itself. The boosters paid the initial down payment of eighty thousand, I think. We're paying the sixty, um, sixty percent, um, and then the remaining ten percent will pay once they install it. Um, that seventy percent, that is what they're going to pay us back over several years. Does that answer your question?
If I remember right, we paid fifty. That'll be our responsibility out of the pebble, is that right?
Um, approximately that.
Or roughly.
Um, for the installation, yeah, yeah. But the, all of the rest of this will be paid back over.
The initial, I thought it was three years.
Three years, three years.
Three years.
I was gonna say three or five, but.
I think it's three for the payback is three.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Alright, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose. Motion carried. Moving on to public forum. I am not seeing anybody here, so we will move on to administrative reports, starting with Mr. DeZale.
Yeah, not to rehash everything that I put in there, but just to kind of summarize it, just as a reminder, the nomination papers for, on the board district openings, and we know that we'll have openings for districts two and five. They can be picked up at any time, but they cannot be turned in until August twenty-eighth. And then they can be turned in between the twenty-eighth and up till the thirty-first of September at five P M. And they can be picked up and turned back into the business manager's office with Kendra. So that you know, we still have not filled the high school math position. Um, before I fully stepped into this role, Mrs. Klingenberg and I worked on making an alternative schedule and moving schedules around with that and making the best of that. And Ms. Krogman graciously helped us out with that too, so, um, we're making the best situation we can out of that. And we'll see what the rest of the summer holds and second semester holds. We are also having discussions with kindergarten. Um, the person that we hired for that in H M S has not released them from their position as they have not found a suitable replacement yet, so we're still working through that too. Just so you kind of know where we're at with that. Both, yeah, both Kent and Casey have stopped in and we're planning at the beginning of August to attend S A I together. Um, that's a great time just for us to talk through some things and a lot of trainings and the, the conference down there and things to talk about in leadership and plans for the year, so we're looking forward to that. We'll tend that right when they begin. Their contract's officially in August first. They're gonna come in and start actually on the Monday, July thirty-first, so that we have a day of getting through and working things over with each other before we take off. At a minimum here, just what I have trainings in the next month or so, I go to S A I for a full day training for the new superintendent's institute next week. And then the day after, Kendra and I will be with Gremeyer. That was part of their services they provide when we hired them as the superintendent's search firm. Is they do a full day of onboarding with new superintendents and the current business managers. And then I'll have initial day at Northwest A E A, um, just with the new superintendents there. As of right now, there's just four of us that'll be there and three, three of us know each other really well from previously, so it'll be kind of fun to work together through that. We've set some other additional trainings, additional financial overviews and trainings and things with I A S B and ISFLIC and things like that, and Kendra and I have some trainings with them as well, so. We are still waiting to finalize the stuff with bound for the activity tickets prices, and that's why that hasn't been presented to you yet. There's still some contractual things that they're working through as a conference, and I know as superintendents, we have a meeting on it this week with Zoom, so I can't give you an update, cause we don't know that yet. We're still working through that, so. And then just as a reminder, and this is at the end too, on August ninth at five P M is when we scheduled the high A S B workshop. And it's, I think, a very appropriate one this year. New superintendent and board leadership, establishing the strong foundation, talking about, um, school board roles and working with new superintendents. So I think that'll be a good one. And I have a training or a call with Lou Anne about that to kind of plan ahead of that this week, so.
One question, um, received the athletic boosters, uh, membership drive and they are offering a, an athletic pass if you join at a certain membership. Has that been worked out with the school in some way, shape or form? I'm assuming that it had been.
Yes, they, we end up billing them for that.
Okay. Okay.
There was a few years where they just did the passes and we didn't know who they gave them to or anything like that. So, yes, it's been straightened out.
Okay, perfect.
And we will, they'll pay the school for those passes.
Perfect. Okay. Any questions, comments for Mr. DeZale? All right, uh, moving on to board committees.
Oh, can I add one thing?
Yep.
I forgot to mention too, over the next few weeks, hopefully before school starts, and it'll be difficult too, but just to take some time, whether it's over a lunch or something too, just to individually meet and go over some things with each of you as board members too, and my role as superintendent and informal and informal. So just keep that in the back of your minds. If you have a suggestion or times that'll work, just email me, so. And then we'll go from there. Sorry, I meant to say that the first time and I forgot.
I read it in there, so. All right, um, since no board committees met, um, we can move on down to recognition of excellence. Was there anything?
I had not received anything other, I hadn't received anything, but just adding that with the conclusion of the softball and the baseball seasons, we just thank them for that and some kids had some really great seasons. I know some of them were recognized and I hate to say one and leave some others out, but, um, we just thank everyone for their participation there.
We can maybe catch that at the next meeting if we get formal. All right, moving on to new business. Consider approval of intent to continue participation in the instructional support program. And I believe there is a resolution there that will need to be read if we are in favor of continuing with that program and...
So you know roughly in the packet Kendra shared with me today. So for fiscal year twenty-three, this came to, um, just over four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that it's applied to our school district. And for fiscal year twenty-four, it will be a little over four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. That's general fund money that can be used to purchase textbooks. I'm drawing a blanket, a whole list of things here. Textbooks, technology, instructional supplies, things like that in the general fund, so very important tool. And it ends, and that's why we're talking about this now to renew it, because it ends at the end of fiscal year twenty-four.
So would somebody want to, if they are in favor of continuing that, to read the resolution, please? I, I'm assuming we have to read the resolution.
Yeah, you can start at the, um, whereas the board of directors has approved that one, that part.
Okay. Whereas the board of directors has approved a financial plan which anticipates the level of funding that will be possible to continue the current level of services and to fund the ongoing programs of the school district. And whereas the board of directors wishes to consider continued participation in the instructional support program as provided in Iowa Code Sections two fifty-seven point eighteen through two fifty-seven point two seven. And whereas the resolution sets forth the proposal of the board of directors, including the method that will be used to fund the program. And whereas notice of the time and place of a public hearing must be published. Now, therefore, it is resolved, the board of directors wishes to consider the continued participation in the instructional support program as provided in Iowa Code Sections two fifty-seven point eighteen through two fifty-seven point two seven for a period of five years commencing the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The additional funding for the instructional support program for a budget year shall be determined annually and shall not exceed ten percent of the total regular program district cost for the budget year and monies received under Iowa Code Section two fifty-seven point fourteen as a budget adjustment for the budget year. Monies received by the district for the instructional support may be used for any general fund purpose. Instructional support program funds may not be used to supplant funds used to fund dropout or drop, dropout prevention programs, talented and gifted programs, physical plant and equipment levy purposes, or to cover any deficiencies in funding of special education instructional services resulting from the application of the special education waiting plan under Section two fifty-six B point nine. The instructional support program shall be funded by instructional support state aid and a combination instructional support property tax levied annually upon the taxable property within the school district, commencing with the levy of property taxes for collection in the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The secretary is authorized and directed to give notice of a public hearing to be held in the high school library of the district in Sibley, Iowa on July ten, twenty twenty-three at five thirty o'clock P M. Following the public hearing, the board intends to take action on the question whether to consider continued participation in the instructional support program.
Okay, and just to clarify a couple of times in there, this will start June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Five, right.
Okay.
That, that's the end of the fiscal year, so it starts with FY twenty-five, the, the beginning of FY twenty-five.
Oh, okay. So, I believe we have to take a roll call?
Second.
Oh, there is a second, sorry. Thank you. Let's take a roll call.
Kyle.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Laurel.
Yes.
All right, that motion passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to item B, consider approval of purchase of hotline for middle school.
So this is to replace basically, for lack of a better word, the, the serving line in the middle school kitchen. Um, it'll increase the number of hot wells where they can place the hot food in, um, so there'll be less handling and moving stuff around. Um, the server, the current one was kind of put together, not built to be adjustable, welded in place, and this one offers some of flexibility and adjustability there. They've had some mechanical reserves over the years that have been fixed, but it's just beginning to show its age. And then it has some other options as well as some additional refrigerator space. So like if they need to keep condiments cool, they don't have to keep putting them in the fridge and pulling them out. There's a space to deal with that as well.
And will these items, are they being paid out of the PEPAL save or out of the food nutrition?
Nutrition.
Nutrition fund.
I move to purchase the hotline for the middle school.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the hotline for the middle school. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of purchase of salad bar and hotline for the elementary.
Similar idea there, obviously a little different one because of shorter bodies and different needs and so forth, but it'll give them some more flexibility for what they're doing and offer some more food options actually for some of the elementary purchases.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the salad bar and hotline for the elementary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Item D, consider approval of Lexia purchase.
Lexia is a E L A program or a language arts program, excuse me, not a E L A, language arts program. Yes, we have Amplify. This is something that supplants that. That might change in the middle school and the elementary moving forward, but we still wanted another year to use it because there's enough use with that moving forward. And that could change in future years, but for the coming school year, they would like to continue that program.
Any comments, questions? If not, would there be a motion?
I move to approve the Lexia purchase as stated.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Lexia purchase as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of N C C partnership agreements.
These are very similar to what we've done in years past. If you have looked back or have a good memory from years past, there's a third one that we signed for four plus, four plus services. And the reason we had that the last few years is we had a student in that program, so you need to sign the agreement. And at the present time, we don't. That student graduated and there's no one else in the program. Hence why that's not on here if you look back or asking. So these agreements would be for the concurrent enrollment for like your college credit courses and then for the alternative high school placement.
And do we need to approve each one separately or together?
I know separately.
Separately, okay. Let's first go with the college credit jointly enrolled courses.
I move to approve the jointly enrolled courses agreement with N C C.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the college credit jointly enrolled courses with N C C. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Uh, second one, alternative high school.
I'll make a motion to approve the alternative high school agreement with N C C.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the alternative high school agreement with N C C. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Item F, consider approval of I A S B legislative priorities.
Okay, it's lagging on me on that screen a little bit here, but I'm going to put them up here. This is what I had emailed out previously and shared with you. And so they have a list of, I think it's maybe twenty-two? Twenty-one, I'm at the page where they start at. I'll look here for sure. Twenty-two. Your priorities, and so what they are asking us as school districts, as members of I A S B, is to pick our top four priorities. So, um, Jamie responded to me, and I won't say his till we've had our discussion. Jamie responded and I've looked through it too, but what we'll do is kind of come to a consensus of what our top four priorities are and then I have a form to respond to that I will put those on in the order that we've chosen as a school district.
Okay, I'm wondering if the easiest way to do it is just go down through each one and if you've got to vote for one as one of your top four, I can register it here. I've got twenty-two of them listed. And then when we get done, we can see which ones have the most points. Does that sound good to you? Okay, let's start out with student achievement. Any votes for student achievement?
Yep.
Preschool.
Yes.
Early literacy. English learners, I have one for that. School safety.
Yes.
Dropout at risk.
Yes.
Mental health.
Yes.
Yes. So two for that. Special education. Sharing and reorganiz, and reorganizing. Area education agencies. Teacher recruitment licensure. Jamie had one for that.
I did also.
Yep, I did too.
So four. Teacher P D and retention. Jamie, Jamie had one for that and I've got one for that.
Me also.
Supplemental state aid. I've got one for that. School funding policy.
I got one for that.
Jamie had one for that. Property taxes. Tax base. Bond issues. Unfunded mandates. Local accountability and decision making.
Yes.
Yes.
Public school.
Innovation.
Innovation. Private school choice.
Jamie had one of that.
And homeschool education. All right, well, teacher recruitment and licensure was a slam dunk. The next one was teacher P D and retention, had three. And then we've got one, two, three others with two votes. Any comments, questions? The two votes are mental health, school funding policy, local accountability and decision making. We probably need to.
Say that again.
Um, mental health, school funding policy, and local accountability and decision making. If we can only come up with four, we probably need to eliminate one of those two votes or if somebody wants to move one of theirs to another.
Well, I would say keep, I would keep, keep one of the dollar ones, either this funding or accountability and then, and then have the other mental health one.
So keep mental.
Just because the other two are somewhat similar.
Okay.
I think.
So, are we in favor of keeping mental health for sure and then eliminating one of the others? Laurel, you okay with that? Okay?
Yeah.
All right, so we've got local accountability and decision making and school funding policy. Somebody want to move one of their votes to one or the other? Or comments on?
I would like to see local accountability stay. I don't know, what about you guys?
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Yep.
All right, we've got our four.
Okay. I will have to make sure I look, because I gotta submit it by the number, so I'll look up and compare that and then.
So the four will be local accountability and decision making, teacher professional development and retention, teacher recruitment and licensure, and mental health.
Okay.
We do need a motion.
And so the, and we need the order here, so we want teacher recruitment licensure as number one. Right? I'm going by votes here.
Yep.
Okay.
Second was teacher professional development and retention.
Second was what? Say that again.
Teacher professional development and retention.
Okay.
Sounded like the third one was mental health.
Mental health, well, I was going to say I have a number for you, but I don't.
It's number seven.
Seven, yep.
Okay.
And then number four was local accountability and decision making.
That's number nineteen.
Nineteen, yep.
Did I by chance look up the number of the first two?
Eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve?
Eleven is teacher recruitment and licensure.
Okay. And then twelve was the teacher P D?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you all for doing that before the meeting. Lessens our time and very important things to, uh, submit.
Sorry, slow.
We do need a motion, yep.
Make a motion to approve the four, um, items that we identified.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the four I A S B legislative priorities that we just discussed and identified. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four district depositories.
So we have, um, general fund, PEPAL, save, and our debt service, two debt service funds that are at Iowa State Bank and then Sibley State Bank has the activity and nutrition funds. And then the maximum, um, amount total that would be at one of the banks, we have eight million. I think we should stay under that.
Sorry, we're still bank still giving us a little extra interest or?
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been good, yes.
I mean, they're keeping up with the rising numbers, too.
Yeah, yep.
I make a motion to approve the district depositories as stated, or do I need to say more?
No, that's okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four district depositories as stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Uh, were there any resignations?
There were not.
Okay, so we can. Okay, so we can skip that.
I believe, I believe there were some new contracts, so consider approval of new contracts. Um, you can see those stated there, the one that, one or two that I wanted to draw attention to. If you're looking, Kelly Jacobs, my wife, we're making him a mentor when we approved that last month. He is actually doing it for two different people and putting in twice the work, because if he didn't accept it, we'd have to have someone else do it. So that's why that's there, so you're right. So he's doing that for our high school band instructor and the high school vocal instructor. And then Amy, even though the softball position, we had talked about this when Mr. Craig was here, is over. Between her duties and Mr. Swenson not being able to finish, she took over the last part of the year and been helping ahead of time. So I had mentioned that halftime head softball, what we mean by that is roughly the duties for half the season.
Any comments, questions? Would there be a motion to approve the new contracts?
Make a motion to approve these contracts.
Second.
Stated.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the new contracts as stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose, motion carried. All right, we will now enter closed session. Before we do so, if you, oh, everybody, anybody want to take a break?
Want to use the restroom or?
Get a drink, now's the time. It won't be, I don't think it'll be hours, but. I'm in a quick, I'm in a quick use of the restroom and get a drink.
I felt like that was a threat, you better go.
Just a reminder that you go, oh, I was going to do that and we're in.
Thanks for the reminder, I forget that every time.
Yeah, I can get some.
I'll, I'm going to stay unless you think it's going to really be long, but.
There isn't anything after this.
Okay, but did, would you guys making it, be making any decision at all?
No.
Okay, it's just to discuss as often, yeah, perfect. Okay, no, that's okay.
The YouTube video will be up too later, I don't know how quickly that gets up, but um, it will be up. So if you need to.
Anything else, no, that's fine. But it's nice, no, it's okay, because it's nice having that as an option for the.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, if there's nothing that will actually be decided, okay.
No, there's not, there's nothing, no other.
So there wouldn't be anything that you would record and kind of.
No.
It'd just be come back and do talking points, probably.
That's it, yes, that's next meetings and talking points, yeah.
Okay, okay, then, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.